Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a green and justice for all.
And now, a moment of silence for our many women in the armed forces and for our police and firefighters who protect our safety here in our community, a moment of silence. Please be seated. At this time, trustee higher is going to swear in three of our special police officers. David Carpenter, captain, John Katch, lieutenant, and Trevor Aquino, for sergeant. Please come forward.
Can I raise your right hand if you have any highest state name?
I have every question.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
As a member of the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York?
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the village of Garden City?
And the laws and ordinances of the village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of State Unit?
The duties of State Unit.
With the Garden City Special Police Department?
The Garden City Special Police Department.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
By the powers best to me, as a member of the Board of Police Commissioners of the village of Garden City, I declare duly void. Congratulations.
Do you want to take some photos? At this time, our department heads and village administrator will comment on agenda items. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to discuss item number 10, the Westchester County Bureau of Purchasing and Buying Cooperative Bidding Program. Basically what this is, Westchester, Nassau, and subsequent police departments alone with the village's police departments of all three towns pulling together for the resources to buy and bulk the low prices. So, Westchester is leading the bid, it's under their name, but we're all part of it and we're requesting permission to accept this bid so we can have another avenue of purchasing vehicles. And one of the core points of this bidding will be hybrid vehicles that we've been looking at going into, and this might be our opportunity at this time at a low price.
Any questions?
Do we need to change on total law or something to do with bidding rules?
Not for this particular one. I think you may be referring to what is known as the best value legislation which we did pass. I think it was about a year or two ago.
Thank you.
That's based on our own agenda.
Okay. Chief Strisco? Okay. Mr. Onk.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of items on the agenda this evening. We have our bond resolution that will allow us to get going on the purchase of our capital equipment replacement program. So, we will be getting our pricing and ordering a number of items. An aerial truck, two leaf vacuums, one fairly good sized mower. We need that same calls. And the other park areas, as well as a number of the smaller pieces of equipment. Item number eight on the recreation is an additional engineering work that was required when we decided to move ahead and replace the shade structure in the adult area of the pool. Working in that area now, pouring retaining walls, the new ramp, and a new curb wall. But the way it laid out was, once we got the drawings from the shade structure, which was after Cameron had given us their proposal, they had to play, plot in where the footings needed to be, where the old ones were, where the new ones had to go, so required some additional work. Then we have a license agreement for our use of Homestead Theater for the dance showcase. We have, again, a hundred young women who commit their time over about a three month period, and then they have really a great show that they perform over there.
Kevin?
Yes?
If it's possible, I'd like to go back to Adelphi and talk a little about their rental fee.
Yeah. We did do that. I believe they waived the actual rental fee of the hall itself. The cost to us is to cover their technical staff for a rehearsal night and two performance nights.
Is that what it was called?
Yeah.
Rental fees?
I know, it says rental fees. It really is, the cost is strictly their labor that they need to have to operate all the technical equipment.
Is that what it was last year?
Yes, exactly the same number.
Kevin?
Yes?
Question. We're about a month away from pool opening. We're on target, is there anything that, any problems we had down there? Any plumbing problem down there?
Plumbing? Not necessarily plumbing, we have a lot of concrete work to do. Mr. Swazi and Mr. De Francisco and myself, we have all been involved with the subcontractors. There's some, a few delays, I think we're still fine. We're being told that it can be completed. Mainly it's trench drain and some work on the retaining wall, which is concrete work. That's, that's, that's just going to take the most time. The filter room is fine, the pumps are in, they're gonna be installing them next week.
So, we should be able to open on time?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Wu?
Hold on a second.
Will you finish?
This is more of a generic question though, this is a good example. Why is it when we have a project and we hire, let's say, Cameron, and we set up a contract with them and we set up the project, all of a sudden there's a change that we have to pay for? Then the experts that we hired to help us with planning it and doing it, why isn't it on their lap?
Okay, so...
This was a shade structure project, correct?
Well, this, this was, this was in the body of the whole project. We had mentioned the shade structure when they proposed. We had not purchased it and we didn't know the exact size at the time. We didn't have the drawings from the manufacturer at the time as to where this needed to be plotted in. Also, there were existing footings that had to be removed that were in the way that we discovered once we had the drawings from the manufacturer. So, this was really caused really by the way that we added in the item.
Was it an alternate?
It wasn't really an alternate. It was, it was, once we bid the project, we realized that we couldn't afford to replace it. And so, we direct purchased this shade structure, which is coming in next week, and that's what began to drive, to drive this. And by the way, in that area, there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on. We have the new ramp being constructed, we have curb wall right where one of these footings has to go, and so, it did require some time. And not both time at the drawing board and also time in the field.
The trusted authority, at the end of the day, it wasn't part of the bid. When the bid came in low enough to afford this, we added it. So, now the subsequent engineering that has to go with that came across. So, it wasn't a miss on anyone's part, it was an addition that requires engineering costs of the, or work on replacement for this.
Okay. So, just to follow up, so it's not a change order then, it's just an add-on?
It wasn't, it wasn't the add-on, it was, it was, how do you, how do you?
This is, this is additional engineering work that was not covered in Cameron's original proposal to the village when we retained them before we even bid the project, before they even designed the project. So, this is an additional work that because we, we changed the scope of construction, it required a little bit more engineering work.
So, back to the original point, then, do we need to reassess the pool just from a lot of those bases? Because this has been multiple change orders to the pool.
Yeah, we're still within the original project though.
All right, we're not going to argue that one. Okay, Mrs. Wu?
Yes, thank you. On the agenda, we have a couple of items, number one and two, which are resolutions per village code and village law to allow the village to assess the unpaid water bills and unpaid commercial sanitation charges to the next year's tax levy. So, as of today, the unpaid water bills totaled about $184,000, and the unpaid commercial sanitation charges are about $3,360. Item number one, the agenda is the acceptance by the board of the deferred compensation audit, and you each receive a copy of the audit report on the chairs tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Wu?
Yeah, go back to the wood. Was that number 100?
$184,000 of about 678 accounts.
Are those commercial accounts or residential?
No, these are residential. Oh, I'm sorry, these are combined. These are combination of both.
Excuse me to the third, are all of our water meters converted, Mr. Swazi? Are all, oh, we had to go to...
Joe Pance, that's another one? Yes, we're, we're down to, there's a handful left to convert. We're still finding people every quarter, assessing penalties. We've reached out to them, we contact them and remind them that you're paying your penalty, you have a meter change. I think, I don't want to give the exact number, but it's, it's below 50.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yeah.
How much is the penalty?
$250 a quarter.
Should we raise it?
To a quarter?
$250 per quarter.
For a thousand.
My, just my suggestion is I would raise it, but here's my question. If we have less, less than 50 people, have we sent them a registered letter?
Yes, we have.
In which they have to sign off?
Yes.
Certified.
Certified letter.
And they have, and they have acknowledged that they received?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine.
I think some of the, some of the work that's required for us to safely install the meter exceeds by a substantial amount of plumbing work in certain places, so they're, they're out there.
Correct. In some cases, residents were unable to change their meter because either they have some type of, there's a problem with the pipes in their house and we don't want to cause any damage, cause any flooding in their house installing the meter. So, we require them to have the plumbing work done in order for us to enable, enable us to install the meter, and in some cases, they don't want to do that.
And we don't buy the problem, but...
Of the $184,000, is any of that penalty? I mean, do you know?
Yes, potentially.
So, if you're charging somebody $250 a quarter, that's a thousand dollars a year. So, this 184, part of that could be the penalty in that thing?
Yes.
Any more questions on board?
Do you want, do you want to picture these, you know, faulty plumbing, so the plumbing gets attached to the meters?
So, when we go into the house to install the new meter, if we notice faulty plumbing, maybe a leaking pipe or anything like that, we don't want to cause any damage that might flood the house, might break the pipe or anything like that. So, we won't touch it, we don't want to, we don't want to break anything in the person's house. So, we explain to them, you need to fix either this valve or this pipe, whatever the issue is, before we'll come back and install the meter. And we give them time to make an appointment and get the plumber in there, but in some cases, people just, they'll call a plumber in, the plumber will give them a big number, and they don't want to do it. So, we can't change the meter.
All right, of the people that have, haven't paid, I think Mr. Wu had said it was a combination of residential and commercial. Okay, so if we have residential, we could just simply tack it onto their taxes?
Taxes.
And what ends up happening is that when they eventually sell the house, we get the money. Okay? With the business, that's not the case. So, with the business, how would we, business turn around to last business?
It's not sell the house, it goes onto the taxes.
Goes onto the taxes that we collect?
We get them, maybe we don't wait for them to sell them.
Okay, all right, so we get them from the taxes. So, with commercials, does that, is that the same thing?
I believe it is, so it's all tax, on the tax bill, and it's paying both taxes. So, if they don't pay the taxes, then we go into a lien process.
Or as I say, if they don't, if the commercial place doesn't pay their taxes?
Yeah. It's, it's put on, they can't, they can't get around it. They've not paid, but it'll get caught up on the taxes, and if they're compelled to pay the taxes, they'll go through a lien process and we solve to, to the bidding process. We will get our money.
Okay.
Joe, do you know how many are commercial? I mean, I don't know.
The vast majority, I have the report, the vast majority are, hold on.
Residential.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mrs. Wu? Mr. De Francisco?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. All your attention to items on the agenda tonight are the public works, item number 11, acceptance of maintenance bond for submain repairs. This is part of the capital projects from last year. The work has been completed and we are accepting the maintenance bond for the work. I do want to call out that there is actually a typo on here. The maintenance bond is not for one year, it's actually for two years. This is something that the board asked us to do with maintenance bonds, to increase the length of them, and so, this maintenance bond will be for two years. The bond actually states that, it's just a word on the agenda, that's incorrect. And...
It says two on the agenda, correct?
It does say two? Oh, I'm sorry, I have an old copy of the agenda, mine almost says one.
Oh, it said, it was for compensation.
We, I had to have a discussion about the maintenance bond.
Yes.
I'm just saying that that is a consistent part of the discussion, that is correct.
Yes.
And the next item on is item number 13, where we will be accepting the bid from All Island Equipment for a new crack sewer machine. This is an item that was on, I believe, the 1819 capital equipment list. We rejected the first three bidders for this item as they did not meet the bid specs that we required, and we were going with All Island for an amount of $67,100, which is below the budget, an amount of $75,000 for this item.
Mr. De Francisco, I also just wanted to say thank you, because I know that I spoke with you a couple of weeks ago in regards to informing people how to address situations with their water, and your department put out a release which was put on the website, which was also put on Facebook pages, and many residents had said to me that they appreciated the update. So, I just wanted to say thank you, because again, as we're going through this process of replacing the water tank, dealing with valves being shut and off and everything else, a lot of people are faced with those issues. If they have a better understanding of how they can address it, tell them, or either why it's occurring.
Yes, you're welcome. There, we're going to talk about those projects in maybe a few minutes.
Okay.
Did you want to say anything this evening about the water tower?
Yes, if we have some slides, we're gonna...
Well, I actually, some slides of multiple projects that we talked about in the mail today. If you want to do that now and take us off into other projects as well, you just want to do...
Take us off into other projects also?
I highlighted all the projects, big projects around the village, this size water tank, but you can give a verbal update now, I'll show you the projects visually after.
All right, fine.
Sure, so, as, as anybody who's driven past can see, that the demolition of the tower is in full swing. The bowl is gone, the top hole is gone, we're down to the stanchions right now. The project is...
We can show these slides in the hallway.
About the demolition, I'll keep talking. Demolition is moving along as planned. We have approximately two to three more weeks for the, for the remainder of the tower to come down. We then need to do some soil remediation that was required by the Department of Health, and once that is completed, the Health Department approves us for, to move forward, we can start construction of the, the new tower.
Hmm, that's amazing.
Yes, you'll also see that as part of the demolition, we were required to have air monitoring to ensure that any, any emissions coming from the demolition were safe. We've had, it's a live testing, there's a person on site every day who's doing real time monitoring of the air quality around the site. Monitor set up around the perimeter, there's a person on there monitoring them. There's been no issues at all recorded with the air quality around the site.
Very good. So, now we're going to see some actual video or slides of the setting.
Joe, has the bid any major problems as far as traffic on Oak Country Road?
No, the, 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 Morgo, who's the demolition crew, has been very good in terms of limiting the amount of trucks coming and going. We've heard, I've actually heard no complaints about traffic over there, and it seems to be, we have the sidewalk blocked off for the safety of pedestrians walking past, they're not, we don't want them walking past the site. But, no, and they, they also make an effort not to stop traffic during school hours or during rush hours in order to maintain good traffic flow in the area. So, that's the tower before we're starting.
So, this is the, right, this is the view of the site is clear. The area just to the west is where the Ethical Human Society trees were. We have agreed with them that we will use this as a staging area, and then later on we'll resurface it at a parking area, that's the agreement, if you settle in.
To the, to the...
So, this is the bowl and the tower before. This is when, of course, I'm going to show you data part, this is the top, the bowl is gone, looks like a bird bath here, sort of. This is the view going west for Oak Country Road. Every day, we go out and tour these projects, as far as it came from. That's the view down Oak Country Road. Now you can see the crane is in place, and they are attaching the cables to a piece of metal, and they're, they're separating metal with torches, burning through the metal. This is a close up of the bowl disappearing, and this is that just accepted in. There's a, there's a, if you look down on the right side, you'll see the guy working right over here, you can see the plane picking up.
Joe, this will be completed in about a year? Well, the demolition will be done in a few weeks, and the tower will be constructed by the end of the year, and then at that point, it becomes an issue of the weather, because the tower needs to be painted before it can be used. So, once the tower is constructed by the end of this year, at that point, we're at the limb of, of the weather in terms of when we can paint the tower before we can use it. So, it could be early spring, if we have a mild winter again, it might, it might be earlier.
So, you can't, it can't be utilized until it's actually all painted and all fitted?
Correct, because the exterior and the interior is painted. Okay.
Is I really, Nicole, didn't we pay extra for special paint?
Yes, we did. We paid, we paid extra for a paint that lasts longer, it's a stronger painting, that will last an extra five to seven years.
Just, I want to point out, to the left side of the photo, that halfway up, there's a windsock, an orange windsock, and that is used by this company, they have equipment that's also there, they're monitoring real time the air quality. It's not just that they're taking it, yeah, this is real time monitoring on the ground.
Do you need this later? It's always interesting to have progress report on the water tower.
It was very physical.
Yes. Went along quickly, I say fairly quickly.
Yes, once the bowl was off, they, they, they had to be very careful, especially on the east side, because there's homes along there. So, that, that portion of the demolition was first voted on the east side of the, of the tower. Now that that's gone, I, I think they can move very quickly, within a week or two.
And the Ethical Human Society will probably really enjoy that extent-ish porting in my area.
Yes, I, I think they will, folks. Busy part. Yeah.
Okay. It is impressive, the whole thing. Okay, next few, so we're going to move along and have all of the department heads finish their report. We'll hear from Mr. Slicing.
Just two things, Mayor, for, item number seven, this is just renewal of the pretty prosecutors in court, just want to point that out, this is on a, a registration today. Mr. Givinello couldn't be here, so he asked you to report on two things that came up. Homeowners, they request for original property folders, now they've scanned into building records, it was suggested that maybe the homeowners would like to have the original copies of their records, so he created an original copy folder request form, which I believe Mr. De has hooked over, is on the website, I think, yeah? It's on the website, so people can fill out this request, and they'll acknowledge it, and they'll have time to fold together and, and them up.
Ralph, if we could take that, in addition to that, if we could also send it to both POAs, so this way then, they can then send it out to the membership. I'd also appreciate if you could send it to each of the trustees. And then, maybe we could also put copies of it over at the Seaford Center and anyplace else that even when we come, sometime when the pool comes or whatever, so that this way people knows that it's available. Also, that's a great idea, Joe. Make it a point where maybe we, some sort of a display over at the library, a lot of residents go there as well, so that this way people will be able to go through and be able to collect their records.
Also, there was a, as you recall, last year, there were a lot of open permits in Millian Park, and I believe the number is in the 6600 neighborhood. There were electric permits, plumbing permits, building alteration permits. That is now down to 716, what?
Wow.
Permits, so almost 88% closed. These remaining permits, people have been notified multiple times, already on the on certified now, so, so Mr. Givinello and Millian Park will be closing these out. Some people just don't want to bother, they, the permits are open under the homeowner, they request the whole...
Nobody ever?
716, there's 101 building alteration permits, there's 335 plumbing mechanical permits, and there's 208 electrical, commercial, residential. So, so basically what happens is any fees that were deposits will now become possession of the village. If these people go to Saltwood's Homes, the, these things will still be open, they will have to reapply and pay new fees, this was communicated multiple times in favor on the website and through certified letters, so we're at the end, at the end of that term.
Very good. All right, at this moment, do any of the trustees have any questions or comments regarding? Yes?
Want to go through the other side?
Can I go through the...
Yes, very good. Yes, that would be a good idea.
Okay, so this is just a picture of the park. Even though it's not officially set by the village, I believe next Friday it will take possession of it officially. This is what came up in Louisiana on the first day and this...
Just like a microphone.
Testing. So this is the, so this is a combination pump and engine. It's called a Quint. It can, because it performs five, third estate functions, five functions. And I was going on my daily tour and the truck is there and just have a couple of pictures of it. I think I sent this photo to the trustees on that day, but this is what it looks like.
Is this the new look on fire, orange?
Yes.
Made in black?
It's not lettering it, it's all kind of a glossy part.
Yeah. People said, how come it's not shiny?
It's actually, we can color it shiny. There's actually still Louisiana bugs on the windshield. Haven't washed them. This is something, this is Field One, looking at the tennis bubble down in Millian Park. You'll see the asphalt in the foreground in the middle of the photo. This area floods a lot. The, the thing that draw our attention to this was constant reporting flooding behind the dugout on First Base Line.
Pooling, yeah.
Pooling, right. So after rainstorm, if you have some pool, within twenty-four hours, it should dissipate. It was not a problem. In this case, it stayed for days. So, so we went down to investigate it. While we were down there, we noticed two other areas. This area right here in front, it was pooling toward the field substantially. And then further down, right behind home plate, there was a drain which was also, so with three pooling ponding areas. So we were addressing the middle one, but in, in fixing this, we cleaned out this, the drain behind home plate, which has a lot of capacity, it's a lot of dirt and...
Yes, it was, it hadn't been addressed in a long time. We cleaned out. It shouldn't have any issues for a long time now.
So now the, the area behind dugout, the dugout, the highway crew, Freddie Sylvia and his team, these guys did a great job. You know, we didn't just put down and take the photo. We've been visiting all of these sites daily. So we see it during its incremental repair. They're running lines, they're pitching it. So now when it rains, the water that was accumulated behind dugout will now pitch toward the drain. That'll accept the water. Over here, they shifted the water away from the field and pedestrian areas. So it'll go, so they won't be pooling there. You can't put storm drains every five feet, but they try to control the water flow and pitch it where it can be the rain away from pedestrians. But this is a constant battle. This is an area, the community park was garbage dump at one point in the village's history. So it settles. But the highway crew, once this pointed out to them, they were there within a week marking it out and repairing it in just a couple of days. So I want to just thank them publicly because they, this type of work you don't see. So it's kind of invisible day to day to the residents. This is Field Two. Field Two, this is a shot from the first baseline looking down the third baseline. In the background, the tall structure in the back, there's new LED lights down there, down by the left field pole. This is synthetic turf infield. The original outfield is grass. The place where the outfield and the artificial field need was restarted. There's new drainage in here. To the right is the batting cage. All of these, all the new fields we've done over the last few years have electric outlets in each of the dugouts so that you could have microphones or pitching machines for practice and stuff like that. All new fencing. This is another shot over from the left field side. It's new bleachers. This is the Winthrop scoreboard. It's kind of hard to read now because it's crated. This is the date arrived, but this is what it looks like today. That's their logo. It was, the logo was last thing to get. It held it up a bit, but we, it's nice. This is on the baseball softball side. And then if you go up to the other side, you see the people playing lacrosse there. If you look at the other side, this is set up for soccer, lacrosse and football, I believe. As we continue into the DBWR, the DBWR has a diesel generator. Right now, the generator we use when we have power interruptions from the grid is cased inside the building. This new generator, now we can supply the power for the building, but it has additional power for future growth. This inside building is a transfer switch that automatically kicks it in. You'll notice the bollards around there, which are Health Department department. This is supposed to be certified and once it is by the Health Department, we'll, we'll have people come back in and disconnect the old generator and hook up the new with the farm watering. By the way, I'd like to thank Donald Stanko who's here tonight, who also overseeing this project and installation of this thing. This is the firemen over on Clinton Road. This is a, this is also diesel powered, right?
Yes, it is.
So this is a coal generator here. The base is in place on a concrete pad and this is sitting in place. This will also receive bollards protected from vehicles and that will be approved by the Health Department. We will then put shrubs and reener around it so the neighbors who are in the vicinity will not have to look at it. I believe these generators are also exercised once a month?
Once a...
Once a week?
Once a week.
Once a week, they self-exercise.
And just so you know, this, this firehouse never had a generator. This will, this is a new installation.
This is the generator, also a coal generator, which is at the, and all these are put out for bid, by the way, all these projects. This is a gas power generator at the senior center. And this is the transfer switch mounted to the building on the outside. So this, this is not...
This generator, this generator is actually operational now. We're just waiting for the final paperwork and the building department to close out the permit and it's ready to go.
Okay, so now the pool project, Mr. Oker talked about this before. The pool project is a, a drainage and a roof project initially. There's three phases to the pool. You have the total replacement of the roof. That includes not just the shingles on top, it also includes the plywood underneath where it's soft or rotting. So the old Yankee drains that were there are now covered over. There's a, it's a whole new design. The water, and this is in an earlier stage. There's now a new drain on the outside that catches the water. It can't even get to the wood or the old Yankee drain. The shingles that you see that are existing will be on the triangular pieces above the doorways there. That's, they'll be happening over the next couple of weeks. There's a new white piece going around, a pan across the entire face of the pool deck. This is the new lights that were there. They replace the old globe lights that were actually missing some globes too. So, and a nice treatment of the wood. This is the wall over by the, the adult pool. There's an ADA compliant bathroom there that was built a couple of years ago. There's an ADA compliant entrance gate and now we're putting a ramp on the far side by the bio fence. The retaining wall was a change order that this board approved at the last meeting because when they removed the steps, the wall was so old and so deteriorated that it just started collapsing around it. So we felt it was better to change and put a whole new wall in to try to match up a forty, fifty-year-old wall that's deteriorating with the new piece. So this is the form. This is the trench drain. The trench drain goes around the entire perimeter of the large pool. Basically, they, they cut away the concrete all the way around. They dug it out and the drains are being suspended by wood and the water will pitch back into the area where we do backwashing of the pool. So this will keep the pool deck dry. They'll be pouring concrete in here. I believe trustee Donnie asked about, one of the trustees asked about problems Mr. Oker looked to. We have had issues with, with some of the contractors' work. The drains that were ordered were substituted. We were informed about it. We told them we didn't want them, but nonetheless, they brought somebody else in who said it's okay. The pitch is good. So we, I want to pull out Scott Blum from our engineering department, who visits these sites on his own. He's assigned by Joe to certain projects, but he, he actually makes other stops. He starts asking questions. He didn't agree with the drawings. We contacted Cameron Engineering. We called a professional surveyor in to shoot all the different grades. We found that the, that the pool was flat. We reordered the correct drains. So these drains went down South Carolina by truck yesterday. New ones will come back tomorrow, Friday. So we're getting what we want. And we're, through this process, we're actually cleaning up some of our contract language and change order forms so that we can prevent anything like that happening again. This is the water main on Pine Street. This is at the very beginning where Grove Street intersects Pine on the eastern end of the village. The company trenches alongside or near the existing water main. They placed the new water main in there and then they, these new hydrants that were placed along the length of the roadway in close proximity to the old hydrants. Here's the workers putting one in. And you can see just in the upper left corner, that's the old hydrant. They try to put them as close as they can, as long as there's no obstruction such as abandoned gas mains or driveways or trees. This is another project. By the way, I showed you the DBW generator before, that big green generator. When that, that does two parts, there's two parts that, there's a transfer switch. The transfer switch is inside the building. That's what allows it to come over the grid when the power goes out. The transfer switch came damaged. Mr. Stanko would not accept that. We did not release it back to the vendor. We let them ship us a new one and never released. The damage went back. We're not taking any subpar work from anybody. This is another case of that, just like the trench drain that just went through. This bathroom was finished a week ago. There was tiles on the floor, the walls, there were sinks in there, there were partitions, there were mirrors. The tile work was subpar. I refused to sign the invoice given partial payment. We refused to pay for this job. We had to rip out everything. This is the men's room. This is the ladies' room. And this is the tile we ripped down. The cost of the tile will be absorbed by the contractor, as will the labor, as will replacement labor and cost of the tiles. We picked out the tiles today. We hope that we can get this up and running a week or so and finished. This is the Rainbow Monument. As you recall, a year or so ago, the Rainbow Division celebrated a hundred years and we had the monument rehabilitated. After that, the Eastern Property Association donated a flag, which is just south of that, on the same island, between Rainbow Place and Clinton. But the concrete work that goes around it, there was some damage north of the pedestal. We didn't want to replace one flag because it wouldn't be, it wouldn't look right. So we had the entire concrete surroundings demolished. And this is the guys pouring, this is our contractor doing the concrete. They're doing some finishing work here and this is what it looks like now. So you'll notice now that instead of having walkways on the east, north and west, we added a walkway to the flags because we noticed during the ceremony, they're stepping over the flower beds. We also made the sidewalks, which were four feet width before, they now match the six-foot base of the pedestal. I want to thank everyone involved with this. Our, our street crews who removed the benches and put them back. The parks crew who maintained landscaping, filling the holes. And you'll also notice there's a wind structure to the right side of the screen. That will hold the electrical controls for the lights. You'll see holes in front of the pedestal. We have, we're putting four LED lights in, in the base there that'll make this monument stand out at night. That wind structure being pushed back toward the sidewalk and we'll put a sign on it to kind of disguise and say Rainbow Memorial. But good work all around everybody. This is a sample of our street work over on Eleventh Street, down by the Woodworks Building. I'm sorry. Trustee, Donnie, have a question?
Actually, I have a question about these. I'm sure everybody noticed it. They seem to sink into the road. Why does that happen with these drains? Lots of corners you go, it's this high.
Well, it could also be if the road was paved, if there's, there's additional layers of asphalt. So it's possible if the road's been patched or paved over.
Sometimes instead of...
It's best to tow.
On village roads or county roads? I noticed on county roads.
Village road. Brian, what are you talking about? See the drain?
Yeah.
Let's just say that's ten inches off the road.
Yep.
This much space. You walk around, you'll see there's many drains that it's this much.
So...
It's almost like it's sunk into the road there.
There's two reasons for that. One is you could have a natural collapse, but most likely, a lot of times, a road, a road usually is good for about twenty years depending on the use. And you know, like Clinton mine, that lasts as long as Eleventh Street. The problem is that when you take a road that has like, that, that curb might be an eight-inch reveal right now, a seven-inch reveal, including the drain. We'll pave it. It'll be the, it's probably eight or nine or ten now. And then when they put the new material in, it'll be the right reveal based on county standards. What'll happen is, let's say in fifteen years, somebody decides to pave that, instead of milling it or repairing the base, they just pave over. You do it two or three times, but it keeps, it raises the road bed up and the curb looks like it's sinking or it's a shorter reveal. That's what's, if you look at Clinton Road, what the county did, they repaved that three or four times. And that's why we're having problems with the trucks to speed down and make that thumping noise because the storm drains are lower where they dissect our roads and the road, you can see the layers of road. So they really have to mill it down and rebuild the base and pave it back.
It's about a corner in my house.
Yeah, it could be a little bit bar.
Four blocks from my house, I can point out eight of them that are this much.
So there's actually...
Doing one now at...
Wellington and Chester?
Yes.
That's what this is. At Wellington and Chester.
Looking across the street.
So there was a drainage issue at Wellington and Chester on the northeast corner. I don't have a finished picture, but this was done in-house by our crews. This is Freddie Sylvia and the highway crew. They put, I think, two of these side by side. They'll alleviate the drainage issue that was there. We have over a thousand of these, a thousand of these in the village. So repairing them, cleaning them out, it's, you know, including one of the parks that we showed earlier, it's a lot of work for a small highway crew, but we do address them. We try to prioritize them based on the location and the, the risk. Now, I put this in one, this is really a National Grid project. This is Garden Street, east of Clinton. National Grid came in here and they replaced their gas line and services, I guess, to the homes. And they, they, I don't have pictures of the median, but the grass median has a lot of material on it, stones and dirt. They have to restore that. They have to rake it out, restore it, the topsoil and seed it. In the case of Garden Street, this was not on our paving list, but as part of any reconstruction work, National Grid must come back in here or their contract has one and make a permanent patch. This is a temporary patch they put on there so cars can pass over it. The process needs some settling. So that patch has been settled and be uneven. Then they'll come in and they'll repaint that area in the white lines. Trustee Hyer was out on Pine Street today and also took a ride down Garden with Mr. D Francisco and was questioning about our ability to pave this. We've talked to National Grid about, about doing the whole road. They would not likely to do that. Mr. Bay, I wanted to talk to you about the recent law that was passed if it applies to the situation, if we can get them to pave the whole side. But the real, the real thing is if we can't, either through our recent ordinance or through them willing to do it, could the village pick up this road this year and do the south side of Garden Street so this scar doesn't exist and then it's really...
It's just gotta make sense to me if you're gonna do half of that road. I mean, or, part of that road, why wouldn't you do the whole thing? So, I mean, to do half of it and not do the other side, it just makes no sense to me. I'd like to see that whole road so you can pave, impossible.
So that, that, the, this road...
Do you have the road that you're substituting for that?
No, but, but it's something that we can look at, Brian.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Why not? If we can do it, why not?
So we're going to have our engineer, John Maroney, look at the cost. I also know that National Grid pays their contract to do this road work. They pay a lot more than we do through our bidding process. So we can try to work out an agreement with them if it's, if the board approves and we can get the funding. Maybe they'll let us, give us the money to offset the costs.
If you, if you go down that road, I mean, it's a, it's a terrible shit, the whole way. So if there's, if we can substitute another road that's not quite as bad...
You could just substitute a road from these things and...
So that's, that's all the projects we highlighted, isn't it?
Well, I, I will add something to that. I've taken a tour of all these projects with, with Ralph and Joe. And I would say for the most part, they're going pretty well. Not, not without bumps in the road, but thanks to our village employees, along with Ralph and Joe, who are staying on top of these things. I think we're finding them. I was on Pine Street today and we were looking at the condition of the road, the debris in the roadway, and they can do a little better there. And I think, Joe, you're gonna speak to the contractors and how they sweep that road on a daily basis now, going forward?
Yes.
There were also some complaints from residents about not being notified about work being done in front of their house. I, I've asked that Joe compose a letter that we can give to the residents. I mean, what they do now is they knock on the door the day that they're doing it. If the resident's not home, they do the work. I, I don't... I'd like to see them give them a letter or a letter to the resident the day before to notify them that the work is still to be done. So Joe did compose a letter that we're gonna use as a form letter so we can give to the residents what work is gonna happen the next day in front of their house. So I think we're moving along in a great direction. And again, I'd like to thank them both for the attention that they've made to these projects.
Just a quick question. We have the code of conduct or standards that we would expect contractors if they are doing work in the village to do things like clean the street every day or make sure they don't leave debris on the ground. I mean, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't have to be chasing them. They should be...
Yes, that is, that is part of the big specs and requirements of the job.
This is more of an enforcement issue.
Yes, yes.
There's a complication, there's a complication on Pine Street. Pine Street, since we're doing a water main, we're gonna repave the entire street, curb to curb. We contacted National Grid and asked them, if you're gonna upgrade this main in the next couple of years, can you do it now? So they advanced their project a year and they replaced their gas main on the opposite side of the street where the water main was, and the services. So some of that debris is not related to the water contractor, it's National Grid. So we have to place a hole to them as well. We have the responsibility partly of the water contractor who was trying to clean up section by section as they do it. So it's more phone calls. They've been, they've been very cooperative, but you know, when they subcontract down, it's another step removed, you know?
Another layer.
Another layer.
That's a tremendous amount of work on Pine Street, just doing the main and the fire hydrants and the house hookups. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of coordination. We're there. I mean, our staff is there. We have an engineer that's assigned there. He's doing it on a daily basis, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
So... Craig and Dee Dee, the local engineer, along with them, the water farm. Yes, they had a very stubborn problem. They had one of the houses, it was a 150-year-old tree. And the contractor...
The roots had grown around the existing water surface.
There was no way to get through it. They were trying, they have missiles, but it's like the $5,000 piece of equipment, they'll lose it in there. We were trying to figure out how to get this water service here. So Craig called up a directional drill that we use for electric lines. The guy came, served it. They drilled through, two-inch hole with a pipe through. So we brought in one of our own contracts we use for other things to help solve a problem of this.
But these projects, they're also inspected on a daily basis by village staff, correct?
Every day.
Yes.
All right, I think that that was an excellent report. I think you jumped in on it. And my friends are very informative in terms of infrastructure. A great deal is going on in the village all the time, so we are trying to keep up. All right, you're going to move on now to citizens' comments on agenda items. So if you have a question that you would like to pose, you can raise your hand and you can, when acknowledged, come up to the microphone. Yes.
This is Joel Smith, Pine Street. I'm looking through Pine Street.
So please, you write it to the microphone.
It's gotta turn on. Is it on?
Hello?
Yeah, you can turn on.
Hello?
Good.
No.
Hello?
That's good.
Get to the mic.
A few suggestions of trustee, excuse me, still suffering some... The Pine Street, I kept the leave, even the situation of the notification. A number of residents on Pine Street have had their cars blocked the entire day. People were not locking on doors and no fire notification was given. Word had spread down the street, so those incidents of being privately locked up really happened on the eastern end of the block. But we became wise and were to travel down Pine Street to get the cars out of the way. But National Grid and the water contractors did not notify people. In addition, if early notification can be given on that, some residents, I think, would have taken the opportunity to have their own contractors come in and put copper piping rather than the lead piping that was discovered going into their houses. This is their own piping, not from the village. The village had their own lead pipes down there that was taken out and replaced with copper. But the situation of the lines going into the houses, why happened to be copper? I was not aware of that. It got lucked out. I understand some on the street have had copper, kind of lead pipes and having a chance to have a contracting deal with that at the same time, the water company was dealing with it, the field crew group. The other thing in terms of cleanup, sweeping the street, it's actually done, but it doesn't help. There's dust down there. I don't know how companies doing work in dry conditions are going to reduce the dust, but it's extensive. If any type of vehicle, civilian or one of the contractors comes up, it's a strong dust storm. And one of the more annoying maintenance things that need to be done is the patching that they put down occasionally fails. And so you then have a large patch, I'm talking in some cases 20, 30 feet of asphalt chunks and other grit which get kicked up by cars going by and then land all over the place. So again, just suggestions when you deal with either the gas company contractors or the water company contractors.
Cheryl, that's the whole point of doing this letter, so people get notified a little earlier, and that doesn't matter. That's why I went down there to take a look at the conditions.
No, I appreciate your visit.
Even if they have to sweep it up, I don't care if they do it by hand. They need to sweep it up and make it a little better than it is.
We recognize it's a construction project, but you're correct yourself in board in taking a proactive situation and including how the contractors can deal with it.
I think going forward, that should be a model we use.
Anyone else? Yes.
Rich Jager, 45th and Rose Road. Question for you, a few years back, South Avenue was repaved. It was really a great thing. Why wasn't the drainage addressed? We have, might as well be named South River, not the drains. I just kinda think it's funny that we repaved the road and didn't deal with the drainage problem that's been there for at least 20 years or more. Anybody aware of that and where it's supposed to address?
Well, it has to be an agenda item at this time.
Okay.
Just letting you know, anything?
Yeah, thank you.
Joe, can we all get a little... Do you have a... Thank you.
Anyone else to come forward with an agenda item? Yes.
Is Roman numeral seven an agenda item?
We have to start at the public hearing.
We will now open the public hearing. This is a public hearing on a proposed local law to authorize a temporary pilot program of restricted parking at the west side of Garden City Parking Field 7N under a pilot program to entail 29 parking spaces for a period of up to one year for persons residing in the premises adjacent to Field 7N at a fee of $275 for the duration of the pilot program. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Trustee Macrina moves the motion. To, is there any discussion on that motion? We're doing a little different lighting justice, okay? Isn't there any discussion among trustees on the motion? Have any non-oral votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Public hearing is now over.
The public hearing is now over. Okay. Are there any residents that wish to speak about relevant to the public hearing? Come forward. It's limited to four minutes.
Suzanne Allen, 67 Hilton Avenue. I have a few questions about this particular island. Are you a term mom to start the pilot project?
This might have to standard that we begin right away.
Right away?
Yes.
Well, since we've opened the pool, we can then set up the signs in a couple weeks as she confirms.
And the signs will say parking by permit only?
Yep, yes.
And the pilot project will last for one year?
Yes.
But also pay...
Up to one year.
Up to? One year, right?
One year.
Yep.
So for those who pay the $275 for the permit, will it be refunded if the pilot project is abandoned?
We probably yes will be funded. I don't see that happening.
And is there no further discussion on the $275 fee? I never received a rationale for that fee.
Oh, yes, during our meeting, when we...
I'm here. I know that it was discussed.
That was a thorough discussion, that was a thorough discussion on that issue. And there had been other discussions of it and explanations that provided that also.
And might we see a schedule of permit fees at other parking fields in the village?
Available? Yeah.
Where would that be available?
What, what difference would it make?
What? I couldn't suggest me. What is the train parking lot? $150 a year? Irene? What are the other places we have permits? We have Field Court?
Field Five, we have Field Court.
Do you know what that is? $200 a year.
I'm sorry, where was that?
Fair Court. Fair Court parking lot, sort of near the courthouse?
All over the road.
Yeah. And then $200 a year.
And the, and the parking at the railroad station is...
It's $150 a year.
$150?
Yeah.
I still don't understand how it became to $275.
Twenty-four hours, seven days a week, two weeks a year. Some of us felt it should be more.
Excuse me, there is absolutely no restriction on parking at the railroad station. Permit parking only, there's no restriction Monday through Friday or hours of the day. It's simply permit parking.
I understand that, ma'am, but the thing of it is that people are not going to go there and park their cars 24/7, seven days a week. The only reason that they take their car and park it there is because they don't use the train. They go there in the morning, they come home at night.
Some people do.
Well, I don't know, I don't know of people who are using it as their garage.
Well, I never used it as a garage, but if I traveled during my business, I would park my car there on Monday morning and come back on Friday.
As I have. But again, all the, then I would take my car and drive it away and then I would park it and I wouldn't be there except again when I would go on the train. So the bottom line is, is that the price that we did is we looked at the other permit fees that were paid in the village. We looked at this as being a fee that someone would be using seven days a week, 24 hours a day, where they would have the ability to park right near the way they live and we felt it was appropriate enough. That's it.
And at the end of the pilot project, 29 spaces are not used, sorry?
I said, unfortunately, you're four months...
Back your own?
You're welcome. Is there anyone else? Yes.
My neighbor's a traditional Canadian. I reside at 67 Hilton Avenue as well. My question is this, excuse me. If you are doing a pilot program for 29 spaces, what happens if more than 29 folks or people would request a parking space? How are you going to allot those spaces?
We put out a survey to find out how many people were actually interested in signing up for that program or just waiting. And we based the number on that.
What happened was there were 25 people who came back and said that they wanted to have a spot. Two people actually wanted to have two spots which we said we weren't going to do. So the bottom line is, we right now have 29 spots and we have 25 people that have committed they would do it. Now, your question is, what happens if all of a sudden 35 people come and say that they want to park those spots? The bottom line is, we would only issue 29 permits if we have 29 spots. And then the board would have to decide if in the event we wanted to expand it or if we would just simply keep it at 29. But we're not going to issue more permits than spaces that we have. So it'll basically be issued on a first come, first served basis.
First come, first served in terms of submitting $275
Correct, and filling on the application?
In terms of the original survey that you put out and it'll be...
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. You write a check, you get a permit. That's it. You write a check, you get the permit, that's it.
That's what I was asking.
We can always expand it.
And the applications will be forthcoming?
We'll have to create it and set up a sticker. It'll take us a couple of weeks.
Okay, we may explain questions later.
One other thing, I mean, should it be in here? One sticker per household?
Yes. You'll get one and one sticker per...
Should it be in this... Okay.
Well, it's not here now, that's why I bring it up.
Well, it's not currently in the local law and I do know that if we make any substantial changes, you would have to repost and rehear. However, I believe that is the kind of regulatory process that does not need to be written into the local law but could be done just by administrative action of the police department. One other point I do want to make however though is that the current draft of the local law prevents parking in these spots between 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM each day of the week. It is presumed as a practical matter that that will result in 24/7 availability to the residents, but the local law itself is only 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM of each day.
You said make it 24/7. Yeah, we said, we said 29 spots, 24/7. That was it?
That, that's fine. The draft has been circulated to the board. It modeled on the other reserved parking lots and calls for 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM of each day.
No, let's revise this and make it 24/7.
Very good, sir.
And let's also include in here one spot per applicant. Absolutely.
Very good, sir. We will have to then rehear this at the next...
Okay.
So it looks like this is signed.
Yes, if the board at the conclusion of this hearing should set another public hearing on the revised local law for the next board meeting, how will we draft this?
It should also have 29, 29 spots.
29 spots. I believe it does say 29 spots. Very good.
Will there be any further comments on the issue while this meeting is still open? Okay, that's it. So you'll return to the agenda?
Mayor, is there a motion to close this public hearing? I'll move. And move to your second section and discuss on that motion. Turning the hearing to the next board. There are now a motion to set a public hearing at the next board. I would make that motion to revise the local law.
All in favor?
They have a motion to adjournments of April 25, 2019. Trustee Foggie makes that motion. I second. Trustee Macrina, I second.
Are all in favor?
That motion passed unanimously. All right, so now we will move on to new business. In the following agenda, there are appointments by the Board of Trustees this evening to reappoint Michael Schroder to the zoning board of appeals for a term to expire on April 1, 2024. To reappoint Peter Goll to the zoning board of appeals for a term to expire April 1, 2024. The following appointments are made by the mayor and they are subject to Board of Trustee approval.
Mayor, yes, just that the first set of appointments by the board is a separate resolution.
Yes.
I'll make that motion approved. Schroder and Mr. Goll is being reappointed to the zoning board of appeals.
I second that. I understand that motion to include that member Schroder, we have the... I understand that motion to include that Member Schroeder, we have a term to expire April 1, 24, and Member Goll, a term to expire April 1, 24. Any discussion on that motion?
No.
Mayor, do you want to call for a vote?
Yeah, all in favor? Aye.
And there at this time, you may wish to make appointments, but are subject to ratification of the board.
Thank you. Okay, we will reappoint then David Osborne, Village Representative to the Authority of West, the Board of Authority of Weston Nesswack County for a term to expire on April 5, 2021. To appoint Lauren Fanseca to the Planning Commission for a term to expire April 4, 2022. We will reappoint Lila Stember to the Environmental Advisory Board for a term to expire April 3, 2023. We will appoint John Manning to the Environmental Advisory Board for a term to expire April 4, 2022. We will appoint Sean O'Brien to the Architectural Design Review Board for a term to expire April 4, 2022. We will reappoint Christian Siragusa to the Board of Commissioners of Cultural and Recreational Affairs for a term to expire April 3, 2023. We will appoint Donald Tahiki Jr., Chairman of the Architectural Design Review Board for a term to expire on April 6, 2020. May I have a motion to approve all of those appointments?
May I have a question first on these appointments? Were all these appointments other than the chairman, which has nothing to do with the JCC, were these all through, recommended by the JCC?
I believe they are. Yes, they are.
Yes.
Right. May I have a motion? Do we approve them?
No.
No, may I have a motion to approve these appointments? Trustee Boebert moves that motion in a second. Trustee McRino seconds. All in favor? Aye. That motion passed unanimously. Great. Now we are going to, we have, we are going to approve the consent calendar. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Trustee Foley, Trustee Foley moves that motion and a second. Trustee Boebert seconds and all in favor? Aye. And that motion passed unanimously. Okay. We will now have comments. Comments, citizen comments on non-agenda items. They will be limited to four minutes each. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Yes.
Hi, Susan Miranda from Heath Place. Could somebody tell me why people came in, they put different colored flags and they spread them into streets and everything? I was between Alaverson, Wharton, and Washington and Stewart.
This is a different system.
It's red, it's blue, it's, it's all different colors and the streets are all painted. And they said they're not gonna stick up the flag, but different flags for all the people.
Those are utility markouts that are requested by somebody who, in this case, I believe it's National Grid or PSCNG. Or both. To dig in the area and they're required to do that before they dig so that they know where the utilities are. Blue flags are for water and red is for electric and the yellow is for gas, et cetera. So.
But they don't notify anybody. We don't know what some of these done up and there's no permit.
No, 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 no. No. They do file for permits today, but before they're allowed to dig.
They may not be ready to do it. They're just marking.
Figuring out where the lines are.
They're marking out the space, but they haven't come to us for.
Oh, so we have all these flags for.
They're marking space.
When they're planning something, they have to figure out where the various lines are.
There are also three exceptions to the permit rule where you do not have to file for permit to dig. Off the top of my head, I believe one of them is our yard, engineering, archaeological digs. It's the third exception. I don't remember maybe what it is. So not every dog requires a, digging requires a permit.
Joe, do you have any idea what they're going to be doing or what you think they're going to be doing? Will they let us know?
I think that. I know PSCNG is doing a transmission line, a new transmission line project, which we've spoken about.
Are they going to let us know?
There are, there are.
Yes, they will.
There are two projects contemplated right now that were, that have been talked about publicly. They're on the website as well. One is PSCG under hardening of their grid is looking to create a link between the substation east of Clinton, which is in the Uniondale area, I believe it's to Lyman Brook or Malburn. I forget exactly where it's at.
Malburn.
Malburn. There are three or four paths that are being evaluated by the Public Service Commission under Article 7 hearing. They have not chosen the path officially, but in the meantime, without a permit, PSCG is allowed under law to do exploratory design work to figure out where this line would go. So if indication points to that, it'll probably come to guard city. We don't have to officially admit that. Nonetheless, they have to see what's in the path. They have to locate themselves next to the utilities. The mall is also a location of a gas main for National Grid. We're in the right middle of National Grid's distribution territory. They have a project called, there's two projects going on. One is Dutch, Dutch Elm?
Dutch Parkway.
Dutch Parkway, which is coming from the west. And the other one is the Northwest Nassau Gas Transmission, which we've also talked about publicly and they came representing about six months ago. They're also exploring for it. Just this weekend, Memorial Day approaching, I contacted, and the blue ones are the water department. Anytime you excavate dirt, you have got to call for mark out. It's, you call, I think, 811?
811, yes.
And they, and these companies come out and they mark out utilities based on all the GIS information maps. So we have blue flags from us, yellow flags for gas, the orange for probably electric. I'm not even sure what the colors are.
Red electric.
Red's electric. So I contacted all liaisons for National Grid and for PSCG and I notified, emphasis was well, that Memorial Day coming up, the mall needs to be cut. I asked them to remove their flags to mark their locations so we can cut the flags for Memorial Day, July 4th, the Labor Day weekends at a minimum. We usually do the mall once or twice a month. It has been cut. I think the flags have been moved, so they have to probably call for new mark outs, but we're trying to give the villagers the appearance they need too. We're also allowing them to slice in their work, but they can't just leave the flags there all summer, which is what they do.
Well, that's to take the gardeners, taking them out, throwing them on the side.
Yes.
Mowing and then putting them back lucky if they went.
We already notified them that we believe the flags are not in their respective locations and they should call for new mark outs because we don't want people digging and hitting electric lines or gas lines and having big problems. Or water lines, which is my primary concern.
Please come forward, Mrs. Oram.
Hi, I have been on one, I'm going to say. I had asked some of our trustees and also Julie Francisco why I had those same colorful little flags for over a year on the village property. For many of you who know, I live right across from your own little railroad station, but the red flag has nothing to do with the electrical poles because I'm going too far from that. When the orange flags were put out, I happened to see the young man who was putting them on the property and I went up and I said, well, first of all, I read the flag. Somewhere at home I have that little note. And he said, oh, these for cable vision. I said, okay. Nothing has been done. My red flags are sort of like this. When the flags were put, I have many people as they get off the train, cut through that property. So I was concerned in the dark, even though I do have spotlights, that someone would trip. But I guess the flags aren't that sturdy, so they sort of bend in the wind. I still have a few there that my gardener very tactfully tries to get around, again, my little property. Not a thing has been done. So I'm waiting for over a year, but nothing's happened.
Well, I cannot tell you what the planning timeline is for these utilities or those that it's, they have to follow size, engineering design, funding, the same things every entity has to do. They're also subject to oversight by Public Service Commission. There's different agencies at state level that they have to have hearings, public hearings. They have to, and certain timeframes have to exist. So the government process behind utilities exercising their rights to maintain infrastructure is a long process. And it happens in phases, so they have to do the mark outs and somebody comes out and digs a hole and they know what's underground, they go back and design it, then they run into an obstacle. Believe you, we deal with this every day. We have a good relationship with our utilities, maybe not so much for us and Cable Vision day to day, but National Grid and PSCG certainly, and they're doing a lot of work in town. We try to manage that and we try to keep in front of it. We challenge them. We keep the trustees informed and public and they also have their normal processes, which are advertised and subject to public hearings that, you know. So it's just, it's just long. I can't, I can't, I can't pull on that, what's going on with that teacher's project.
But I do know cable vision, they have to strip in the road if cable vision leaves and also they go between my jibery and my next door neighbor's jibery because I have to call at all the time to reset to input the better bolts in the metal thing. But I'm just curious. I mean, I'm not kidding. It's been over a year for your task.
And there were other things too that, on this water main project, for instance, we called for a mark out. We know where the water is, we call for the gas and electric. And what we don't get in the mark out is that, oh, years ago, they supplied this property and there was a gas service they capped it. They don't mark that out. So we're digging, contractor's digging, they find the gas service is marked out and five feet away is an old gas line that they'll hit. So this has certain patterns when you dig, you find things you didn't expect, which slows down the process.
But I find it humorous that I'm in the states and it assumes it means east and yet the same flags popping up. So I mean, you're doing work all over, but not doing work anywhere? Just my comment.
I want to notice my clues.
Is there a requirement to keep them in there for a certain period of time?
Trustee McRino, I wrote an email just two days ago or yesterday saying, if you don't pull them out, it's time for you to cut them or pull them out. And I just told him, I'm not, I don't want to tail wag the dog. I need to cut that mall for the appearance of the village for Easter holidays. And I, they put them there, like Ms. Oram just said, they've been there for months. And the guys come, you'll see trucks around for six, seven, eight days. Then it rains and they go away and they come back with nobody and they leave disheveled grass and stones, just like we do about on Lawrence Street, except on a grander scale. So we are pushing back and we're saying, listen, you don't have to cooperate. We're going to remove the flags. And I assume that when your trucks come here to dig holes and they'll see the flags, I'm just going to dig. They would say, hey, there's no mark outs. We would hope condescends for that, but. So we've, you know, if we can't find them, we can, we can not issue permits, but there's open permits required.
Matt, aren't they working with us a little better these days? I mean, on Pine Street, isn't it gas?
Yeah, I know we're doing it all. The Pine Street Water Main, for instance, we talked to our liaison and we said, listen, what we're going to do is water main, we're going to pave a whole road. We don't want you coming in. As you all know, as soon as you pave a road, some utility digs a hole in it, which is annoying to everyone, including the residents who see it. So we said, can you please, if you have any intention to do gas work on Pine Street, can you do it now? While we're doing the program and they said yes. They accelerated the program a year. They called people who didn't have gas and said, you want gas? Because we're going to put a moratorium on this for three years. So when Pine Street's painful, as attested to by Mr. Smith who lives there, as we observed, as Trustee Hyer did and the complaints we did. At the end though, you're going to have a brand new road with brand new water mains that's good for 100 plus years, where gas service is good for eight or 100 plus years with new curb sidewalks and, and curb cuts for your driveway. The best roads now.
Anyone else? Yes, come forward.
Good evening. Rich Gray, 197, Lee Brookbrook. Trustees Donnie and Foley were good enough to inform the State's property association about the potential for work being performed on the Nesswack Boulevard railroad station parking lot. Specifically with regard to.
Brick pavers?
The brick pavers.
Correct. I didn't say.
Somebody said something.
I was getting clean. You say Trustee Hyer, for some reason. Like you're rejecting your. I can help that enough with myself.
So hoping to get a little more detail as to where you're at in the process.
My answer is, we talked last time. We are going to get this.
A little more detail.
That's pretty much it.
So has the, has an RFP been drafted? Okay, what's the timeline?
Weeks.
You know, I guess, you know.
You gotta answer something. Let me, let me.
What's your basic, what's your basic?
Okay, we have, we have a railroad station we all recognize as a historic, I'll use the word jewel for lack of a better word. It's a nice place. It was built beautifully with all the technology. It's savable and it's tiered. Now, we're not insensitive there. We do have a plan to call in people who are, who are no other people, who are, who are restoration type of thoughtful people, who would give us some guidance as to how we could modernize the parking facility, rehabilitate it, rebuild it, and also take consideration to the historic aspects that you're evidently leading toward identifying for us. You want us to take caution there. So we don't have plans to just bulldoze it. We don't, we don't have any plans yet. We are trying to look at how we modernize this parking facility and make it last 30, 40, 50 years. Doesn't mean throw away the old for the, we don't have the zone yet. We will come back though with multiple alternatives. One alternative would be just do nothing. That's really not a good alternative. One is to destroy the, make it look like all the other parking fields. We're not leaning that way. One would be, how do we preserve, maintain the look and feel of that history in some form? And there's a cost to doing that, which could be, you know, if you take the bricks out by hand, that's a very labor intensive exhorting cost. So there's also a balancing act. So we'll probably come up with a blended solution. But I don't want you to think that all these projects we're doing, I think we tried to demonstrate here that we care for the tax payers' dollars. We push back on our contractors and our partners. We observe them and deal. We're trying to do the right thing because we know it's an important thing that you want to pay attention to. At the same time, we do have to do something.
And I know with regard to the LRR community benefit fund, I'm not sure off the top of my head if anybody knows the exact allotment that's going to fall into guard city. Okay. If in the event, you know, the bids go, the bids come in and, you know, it approaches that dollar amount, I mean, would there be an appetite to use all those funds for, say, this one singular project?
No.
Are there competing applications?
Absolutely. Ask Mrs. Oram, who lives across the street from the tracks.
No, no, no. I want that money to help my neighbors.
I want them. No, we're not that far.
That's more so.
If I could just comment on this, even though I was in a meeting last night, one of the other things that we also have to take into consideration is how many, I'm sorry. We have, how many train stations do we have? Five?
Five.
In the city?
Five and a half.
Five and a half, okay.
You count them.
Okay, well, basically what you're looking, you're looking at five stations. Now what's happening is Maryland is in the process of being torn up.
I know that very well.
And within probably six to nine months, New Hyde Park, which is the largest part of this entire project, will be totally torn up. Now, in my thought process, not that I'm saying that this is not an important project to do and I think it's something that should be done, but do you also want to think about the timing of it? Because do we now want to now sit there and tear apart? Because do we now want to now sit there and tear apart a third track, a third railroad station in town at the exact same time that you have two others being torn up simultaneously? So, the thing of it is, one of the things that I was thinking about is that, again, we can sit there and do the work by the timing of it, but that's one of the things we also have to take into consideration, because we can't sit there, and we can't have 60% of our track being torn away, or parking lots, or residents are gonna go crazy. Where are they gonna be parked, where are they gonna be gone? So, I think that's one of the other things that we also have to coordinate. In addition to all that, this stuff takes time. So, I mean, you know, this is not something, a decision that's being made for weeks now.
I understand. Yeah, I mean, beyond the obvious, I mean, you have the crumbling walls and some surrounding infrastructure. What exactly, and there's some warping that I noticed, but otherwise, the brick, I mean, the brick is in beautiful condition. I mean, it's lasted 100 years. What specifically are the issues that we're trying to address here?
You know, I don't think you can go into the, your four minutes, Oram. It's getting late, but we are interested in what you have to say. And we do think that it's important to maintain as much of the integrity of the...
I think, I think I would leave my request.
Listen, I think you bring in very valid questions, but again, these are all things, that those answers to those questions is so far down the line, I mean...
Never too early.
Like I said, just, you know...
I guess I would just close by saying, you know, I would just ask that the preservation element, which it sounds like that's a fairly large consideration, that that be a consideration? The primary?
Yes. Okay, is there anyone else? Yes.
Brian Panola, 56 Kingsbury Road. First and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Swazi and Mr. Francisco for the beautiful work they're doing throughout the village. That slideshow is very informative, and a lot of people don't realize what's involved in all this work. Now, I'm gonna put on my Garden City Historical Society hat, and I'm gonna speak on the after Garden City Historical Society relative to the historic Nassau Boulevard train station work that Mr. Correa just spoke of.
Mr. Panola, I'm sorry, are you the current president?
No, I am a board member. I was the president.
Okay, so I want to say, so you're speaking, and you're representing the entire Historical Society right now?
I'm authorized by the board of trustees to speak on Garden City Historical Society.
Okay.
Getting back to my point. This is Garden City, it's a unique community, it's a historic community. We know that we're celebrating our 100th anniversary of incorporation and 150th anniversary of the purchase of the land by A.T. Stewart. If you mention to someone, I just mentioned this earlier this evening, that you're from Garden City, and they're a Long Island person or local person, they're like, wow, you live in Garden City? I mean, people are impressed by our community. It's well-known, that's why the property values are maintained and are always increasing. So, what we're asking is, and Mr. Swazi alluded to this before, that they're gonna even be consulting people that are, you know, have preservation expertise. Why not, as you've done on other projects, hire either a landscape architect or an architect who has expertise and experience in historic preservation? Let them prepare the bid specs on this work, and this way it'll ensure that the work is done properly. I always think back to when Garden City resident and landscape architect William Kewell did the Seventh Street project. He won several awards for that project, that was cited in some magazines. This is another example of when something like that could be done. When we do a project in Garden City, just like the other projects, the Warren Ables over there on Clinton Road, we should be recognized as leaders in projects. People should admire the work that's done. We should win awards, just like Bill Kewell did with the Seventh Street bathroom. So, let's think big, let's do it right. Let's set an example for Long Island and the state, and let's win some awards. How does that sound?
The one thing I can tell you that's sure is that's the spaces that we love. Stay big enough for a horse and a car.
Please, give us some serious consideration. We're not looking to, we're looking to improve the community and to make it the place that it has been for, you know, the hundred-something years that village has been around. So, give us some serious thought, please. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Anyone else who was interested, sir?
Trustees, I serve on the committee that the trustees can now make a setup to deal with the centennial of Garden City and assess the centennial. I'd like to give a few minutes of preview of some of the items that we have had donated to us, and I'll reach out to other history-related organizations. Yesterday, the New York Times had an article in it concerning NC-4, which was a massive seat plane that took off from Rockaway Naval Air Station through Rockaways in Queens, and it was the first plane to cross the Atlantic. Lindbergh, as most of you know, was the first one to do it solo and did it nonstop. But on May 8, three massive seat planes, which were built in Garden City on Clinton Road plant at 71 Clinton, for Curtis, that's the facility most of you know, that's FedEx in the back, and Boce in the office. Those planes did it in three hops. Only one of them made it to Lisbon, Portugal. What was donated to us is this commemorative picture, which is from 1919. I'll have it later if you care to look at it. This is the seat plane, again, that was built at that plant, along with nine sister ships. The smaller thing you see at the bottom is a fabric, which is the linen that was taken off the ship when it was airborne. When it came back to Garden City and was renovated, the Navy had the idea of selling these plaques and strips of the linen as a commemorative fundraiser. Again, this would be donated, and it'll be going eventually to the library, but it'll be at the May 25 affair, again, back to Garden City, to Tim's side. That competition to cross the Atlantic, and by the way, take another minute, the Rockaway event yesterday was quite nice. There were almost 500 people there in attendance, including some local New York State politicians and this, that's why they had a decent amount of assets there, including a fireboat in full fire hose pumping display. They had flyovers and speeches. Garden City was mentioned as the birthplace of NC-4 by Glenn Curtis, the father of naval aviation. That plane, by the way, still exists. It's in the Naval Aviation Museum in Pensacola, Florida. But that attempt to come across the Atlantic was a competition between England and America. And by circumstance, Garden City also participated in the British entry, because two months later, in July of 1919, the largest thing that ever came to Garden City, a huge British dirigible, R-34, landed in Garden City. It stayed here three days, the crew stayed at the Garden City Hotel, and then lifted off in a night takeoff. On the searchlights, which was a full front-page article in the New York Times, overflew the village. They dropped their commemorative note down onto Seventh Street and the hotel where they had stayed, proceeded to then circle Manhattan, and headed back to England. R-34 crashed a few years later off the coast of England. But this picture will then be donated to the village by different groups. It's part of the evidence that the mayor's put together with this centennial committee, and we're hoping to get other things for the 25th of May and the other events that will allow us to demonstrate the rich heritage that this village has in so many areas. Thank you. I have one other idea. I'm gonna go ahead and monitor, give me another 30 seconds. And by the way, in 1919, sides of the village, these were huge events. If you go through a New York Times review, the papers were filled with R-34, NC-4. And there's all types of humorous stories. When that airship arrived over Garden City, the crew had actually been landing for us. You may know they pulled the dirigibles down by ropes once they get close enough to the ground. The crew had been sent up to Cape Cod, because they had thought that the airship was not gonna make it there. And so, it was Garden City residents, the police department, and the fire department that pulled the dirigible down. This is the model that's been donated to us of NC-4. The wingspan on this thing is wider than this building is long.
Wow.
Okay. This is an open cockpit, five-man crew. Some of their relatives or descendants, I should say, of the ceremony yesterday. It was a nice affair. Thank you all.
Anyone else? May I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, that is... May I have a motion for that? A second? All in favor? Aye. We land this motion.